Explore chambers to conduct the council business meeting in person. And because we encourage community involvement, we invite the public to join us in person or participate via remote option through Zoom. Or view on B C A T. For anyone who is attending in person and plans to comment tonight, please print your name clearly on the sign in sheet. So your name will be included in the meeting record. And for more information, please refer to the public comment interim process handout. At the entrance table at the back of the room. Tonight, we have council vice president Jane Revolowski attending via Zoom. Dave, can you confirm that she's online? Good, thank you, sir. And council member Coughlin will be absent tonight. First item up tonight is the consent agenda. I'll turn to our city clerk, Ms. Hoover.
Thank you, President Younger. For approval on the Consent Agenda today is item three A. Claims and check register approval of the following checks and electronic fund transfers. One, check numbers four one two six four nine through four one three zero three zero. And E F T numbers V four four six nine eight through V four four nine one zero. In the grand total amount of eight million five hundred forty seven thousand five hundred twenty eight dollars and eighty five cents. Two, regular payroll for the pay period ending October fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and the amount of one million one hundred seventy eight thousand eight hundred ninety five dollars and forty two cents. Three, regular payroll correction for pay periods, May fifteenth, twenty twenty five to October fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and the amount of one hundred sixteen dollars and sixty cents. Four, regular payroll payout for pay period ending October fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and the amount of six thousand five hundred ninety one dollars and twenty one cents. Five, retiree payroll for pay period ending October thirty first, twenty twenty five, and the amount of thirty seven thousand eight hundred thirty two dollars and thirty eight cents. Item three B, minutes of council meeting, October fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Three C, minutes of study session, October twenty second, twenty twenty five. Three D, ordinance number five five two four to amend Bremerton Municipal Code, section two point oh five point oh two oh. Entitled Appointment and Confirmation of Department Directors. Three E, Public Works Agreement with Long Building Technologies, Inc. For installation of the Emergency Mass Communication System and Puget Sound Navy Museum. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Thank you. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the consent agenda items, we only ask you to state your name for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Does any member of the public wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items? Mr. Sorensen, you check online for me, please?
There's nobody online.
Thank you, sir. Seeing none, I'll turn to the council for a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second?
Call for the question.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Revolowski?
Yes.
Thank you. Good now?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we'll go to our public hearings.
Public hearing, item four A, public hearing on resolution number three four zero seven to approve the twenty twenty six through twenty thirty consolidated plan and community development block grant. And home funding recommendations for inclusion in the twenty twenty six C D B G home year one action plan. Our presenter tonight is C D B G Administrator Sarah Linum.
Welcome, Ms. Linum.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
Okay, well, thank you all for allowing me to present this evening. We are bringing forward our new five year consolidated plan for C D B G funding from HUD. And within that five year plan will be our year one action plan. Which includes the projects that we plan to fund for twenty twenty six. And so I'm going to start with the consolidated plan. I presented back in April about our process. At that time, we were conducting a community survey and a needs assessment and gathering data. That process ran alongside our normal grant cycle for twenty twenty six. We have completed that process and so now we are here to finalize both the consolidated plan and the funding recommendations for the first year, twenty twenty six. Both will need to be submitted to HUD by November fifteenth. So the consolidated plan is prepared with the county and city together in a partnership. We prepare this package that we call the consolidated plan and within that are a few different parts. The county's plan is larger and contains more housing data. And how they plan to use federal home dollars in addition to their C D B G dollars. Within that larger plan, the city has a standalone plan that will be an attachment to the larger plan. And within that standalone plan is our twenty twenty six funding recommendations. So a couple of different layers here. And the entire plan is submitted to HUD as a package deal. But our request for city council this evening is to review the city standalone plan and then the twenty twenty six funding recommendations. The city's plan, there are a few different components. We have information on the public process, which included meetings, consultations and outreach. We have a needs assessment, which includes the community survey results as well as info from our consultations. A market study showing available housing and economic data and our strategic plan, which details how we Plan to use these very limited federal dollars to address our priority needs. The consolidated plan document and the funding recommendations were released for a thirty day comment period beginning on September twenty ninth that ran through October thirtieth. We sent out a legal notice as well as an email notification, a social media post and printed flyers around the Normdix Government Center notifying folks of the opportunity to comment. We had not received any written public comments. And then just to recap our process that we go through to select projects for C D B G funding, this is part of, again, a part of a joint process with Kitsap County. It includes city C D B G, county C D B G, county and city home, federal home dollars. And the Community Investment in Affordable Housing Grant, as well as other countywide housing and homelessness funding. So as far as C D B G goes, we receive our allocation directly from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. As an entitlement community. C D B G funds can be used to address a number of community needs and these funds are primarily meant for capital projects. The council's approved priorities included in the consolidated plan are preservation and or rehabilitation of affordable housing. That can include acquisition of housing to create or preserve units of affordable housing. It can also include things like weatherization or repair of existing housing units. Infrastructure and public facilities projects, including street and sidewalk improvements in low income neighborhoods. Parks projects and other public facility projects in low income areas, as well as micro enterprise assistance programs. And so we have a number of federal regulatory requirements that we must adhere to when we administer C D B G dollars. All activities must be eligible. They must meet a HUD national objective. And they must meet one of our five year consolidated plan priorities. Projects must primarily serve low to moderate income individuals or benefit a primarily low to moderate income area within the city. For housing related projects, C D B G can fund acquisition or rehab of housing, but cannot be used for construction of new units. And so our applications that we receive for the program year are reviewed and scored by the project review committee. That committee is made up of city staff, representative, represented from the planning commission, represented from city council and community members. These are always really challenging decisions and deliberations that our committee goes through each year. And just a special thank you to our citizen volunteers, because as expected, we receive The dollar amounts we receive or the requests we receive are far greater than the amount of funding we expect to receive. Our online application was open June seventeenth through July fifteenth. And during the month of August, our project review committee reviewed and scored each application. The committee met on August twenty eighth to discuss and rank the projects by score. And applicant interviews and final committee deliberation took place during the second week of September. And those, the minutes of those meetings are included in your packet. We often don't receive our C D B G, C D B G dollars until mid year, sometimes even later in the program year. And so when we award C D B G for the program year, we have to work with estimates based on the prior year. With changes at the federal level, we are also considering the possibility of program cuts. And so we start with the estimate of three hundred thousand. That's based off of last year's estimate with about a twenty percent reduction. We go off of estimated program income that we expect to receive from prior city projects. And then we also have prior year funding from twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Those were from capital projects that came in under budget. And then twenty percent of our total estimated entitlement plus our program income is a set aside for The grant administration and that left us with about three hundred and seventy four thousand dollars to award for all of our projects. The committee's scoring and deliberation resulted in four of the five applicants being selected for funding. The project which was not selected was the boost program. It was a project that we funded in twenty twenty five. This was a micro enterprise assistance program for home daycares and due to delays at the federal level Beyond their control, they had not been able to fully execute their twenty twenty five project. And so the committee felt it important to have more data before we fund them for a second year. And so I'll go through each project here in just a moment. The committee's recommendations fit the city's funding priorities, which include, again, capital and infrastructure improvements, particularly those that improve access to services and preserve existing units of affordable housing. As well as activities which expand economic opportunities for low income individuals in Bremerton. So the first project that was funded, one hundred and fifty two thousand dollars was recommended for improvements to Catholic Community Services Benedict House. This is an all men shelter with twenty four emergency shelter beds and three rest care beds. They currently serve about one hundred and ten individuals annually. And provide individual case management, three meals daily, internet and computer access, among other wraparound services. Funds specifically will be used for bathroom renovations, HVAC upgrades and new fire doors to meet fire code requirements. And then next, the weatherization program through K C R was selected. Fifty thousand dollars will benefit weatherization and minor home repairs services for five homes within the city of Bremerton. Funds will be specifically used for contract labor and materials to install weatherization and health and safety improvements. And the majority of the clients that have been served in prior years have been senior citizens. And then one hundred and twelve, about one hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and nine dollars was recommended for City of Bremerton Public Works Department to construct ADA curb ramps at the intersection of Fifth. Fifth Street along Hewitt Avenue. This site is within the pedestrian priority network and is one of several pedestrian ingress and egress routes for employees Of P S N S and military personnel. The site is also close to city parks and the downtown business district. And beyond what has been budgeted for this site, any remaining funds left over can be used at the discretion of Public Works to To go towards another site in need of ADA curb ramps. And then finally, for C D B G, sixty thousand dollars was recommended for the best program through Kitsap Community Resources. This is the Business Education Support Training Program. Funding will support wage compensation for two class instructors, including one bilingual instructor delivering content in Spanish For K C R's eight week business basics training course. Additionally, further support is given to program graduates via monthly networking and support meetings and regular check ins. And in addition to the project review committee's recommendations, we also asked that the council review the Bremerton Home Funding recommendations, which are selected by the county's grant review committee. Federal home dollars are meant specifically for affordable housing activities. And the city has a consortium with Kitsap County for home funds and our share is about twenty nine percent per HUD federal regulation. The county grant review committee is recommending one hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty two dollars For down payment assistance, for the down payment assistance program with community frameworks. The program will pair home funds with internal and lender partner funds to provide up to twenty percent Down payment assistance and closing cost assistance to program qualified mortgage ready home buyers In Bremerton that are at or below eighty percent area median income. And then in addition to our funding recommendations as a part of our Regulatory requirements, we build in contingencies to these funding recommendations. So Because we work with estimates until the federal budget is passed, the committee has recommended That should the city receive less than what we've estimated Or pardon me, more than what we've estimated, additional funds will go to the Public Works Department Project for ADA curb ramp upgrades. Up to their budget of one hundred and forty two thousand. If the city receives less than three hundred thousand, then The corresponding amount would be taken away from that project. And then should any other contingencies arise, the project review committee can reconvene. And so just to again recap, what we're asking City council to review is the city's standalone consolidated plan and then the twenty twenty six project recommendations. And then just for Further information, if folks are interested in learning more about county wide funds that address housing and homelessness, those are posted on the county's website. There's a Q R code there. And so there's a number of different funds that also that address, address needs within our wider community. And that is the end of my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Linum. Purpose of this public hearing is accept public comment and action is anticipated. With that, I open the public hearing. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Mr. Sorensen, is there anyone online? Oh, well, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask like a follow up question. Most of the awards made sense to me, but the one for public work stood out. It didn't seem quite as obviously in line with what I expect for C D B G funds. So I was just wondering if I could get like a little bit more information about why the committee felt like that was one of the ones to include Of all of the different proposals that came in. It just kind of stood out to me a little bit in the lineup, which was a little odd for me. Thank you.
Okay, fair enough. Ms. Linum, would you like to address that question?
Sure, let me just go back to Go back to my slide here really quick. If it'll let me, there we go. Okay, so I want to go back. Okay, so The ADA curb ramps, so this would be the installation of ADA accessible curb ramps where there currently are none. And so the idea is to improve, improve mobility throughout the city. And specifically, these type of projects are only allowed in areas where more than fifty one percent, fifty one percent or more of households earn less than eighty percent of the area median income. So that's that piece of serving a low to moderate income area rather than specifically like a program which serves individuals directly. This is serving a low to moderate income area By promoting accessibility.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Linum. Mr. Sorensen, you check online to see if anyone has their hands up, please?
There are no hands up right now.
Thank you. Last call for public comment. Seeing none, I'll turn to the council for, oh, hang on. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. I'll turn to the council for a motion. Councilmember Fry.
I move to pass resolution number three four zero seven approving the twenty twenty six, twenty thirty Consolidated plan and twenty twenty six city C D B G and home funding recommendations For including in the city's year one action plan and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute the agency grant agreements With substantially the same terms and conditions as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Your motion is second. We'll open up for any discussions. Councilmember Fry.
I just want to congratulate Sarah once again this year for great work and the committee. I don't chair it, but I certainly, I used to run the Y W C A and we depended on that funding every once in a while For improvement. So congratulations to those with awards. I sure wish it was more money and I'm worried about this fund from the federal government. Because it does make such an impact in our community. But I commend you, Sarah, and great work once again. And please pass on, I believe, our, our thanks to the committee this year.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yeah, so having been part of this committee in the past, I know how absolutely professionally this is run. And you'd be surprised how few applications actually come in. From the looks of it, I don't think any were denied except for the, the, the we boost, the, and that was, as explained. Apparently delays for some reason from the federal government prevented them from fully Executing their plan. So they were able to work their out, they were able to start on outside of Bremerton, the we boost. It's like a daycare connection App. Is that what it was? A daycare connection app of sorts, website? But they weren't able to integrate Bremerton because they didn't receive the C D B G funding. And so I too am hopeful and a little concerned. I do hope that we don't face too many Cuts. And so I wanted to ask, what's the protocol, Ms. Linum, for if there are budgetary cuts? How do we mitigate that? Do we just kind of go back to the awardees and say, I'm so sorry, we did not receive this funding? What is the protocol for that, just in case?
Yeah, so for, for twenty twenty six, you know, we were sort of, we have to wait for the federal budget to be passed. That's sort of when we, when we know What our allocation is going to be in a typical year, that's usually February, March, when HUD releases our allocation amounts. And at that time, we can begin sort of the process of preparing. That, again, that process was delayed a bit this year because of New contract terms and things like that. But in a normal year, we would receive, we would be notified of the amount that we would receive and then We would be able to tell our applicants, okay, we can now say this is the amount that you're going to be getting. And so again, that's why we build in contingencies and that's also why we, we try to estimate if there is going to be a cut. So Prior year, twenty twenty five, our amount was about three hundred and eighty thousand. And so hopefully, we've kind of done a decent job of estimating to where it won't be less than three hundred thousand. That's, you know, fingers crossed. So that's our protocol. That's why we have these contingencies that we build in.
Thank you. And so you mentioned new contract terms. And so I'm just kind of, I just wanted to make sure I'm getting, I'm, I'm looking at our city attorney. I know that that's a little bit Got a little hairy for a minute. We weren't quite sure what contract terms might mean. Is this Just, we are in compliance with federal language, correct? That has been determined?
No. We filed a lawsuit in federal court and requested an injunction to strike the terms that we had issue with, and it was granted.
And it was granted?
It was granted, and that's in place right now.
Fantastic. So, thank you. And that's, that's important information for folks to know because it's farther, it's, it's more far reaching than just with C D B G. It had to do with a lot of other grant programs. And so with that, I have no other questions or comments. I just super appreciate the work that y'all do to get these programs out into the community and, including to Public Works. To get those ADA ramps. So in our communities that need it the most. That is all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, good now?
Also to Ms. Levine's question. So the, the city is allowed to apply for these funds, just like for lots of other projects, we apply for funding in different areas. I would say that the history of C D B G, they probably have applied and probably not the committee's top priority. And with the exception of this one that had technical issues. They fully funded everything else and then basically just took the remainder and said, hey, Public Works, you know, do the job. You know, do as much as you can. And usually Public Works will find funding to finish it. So I just wanted to kind of add that. I didn't want to over explain.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the council? Mr. Sorensen, will Vice President Revolowski have her hand?
She does have her hand up.
Go ahead, please.
Yes, I understand concerns From the community why the city of Bremerton is applying for funding. We have hundreds of intersections that are Impossible for people with severe mobility issues to Travel through. So All the ADA ramps that we can get installed and help from the federal government to pay for them is great. It just helps us stretch our dollars a little bit more. Thank you, Sarah. I think you did a great job and thank you to the residents who helped you on this committee.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mockler?
Thanks.
So really well done. Thank you, Ms. Linum. I just wanted to also point out to people that for usage of Lulu Haddon Park in District Six. The sidewalk that runs along Lafayette is from C D B G funds. And I believe other improvements at Haddon Park also came from C D B G funds. So there again, Public Works was reached out to, and I believe it was Public Works crews that did the sidewalks. But in any event, that's where the money went. Kids walking safely.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, I call for the question.
Councilmember Fry?
Yes.
Revolowski?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
And Younger?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is item four B. Public hearing on ordinance number five five two five to levy property taxes for collection in twenty twenty six. Presenter tonight is Finance Director Mike Riley.
All right. Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. I've got one PowerPoint presentation that encompasses all the next three items, but I'll break them up. I'll stop between each item, just so when you see the title, don't be concerned. So let me share my screen. Okay, so we'll jump right in. So again, first, first thing we have, what's in front of you is the twenty twenty six property tax ordinance. This ordinance needs to be adopted and submitted to the county by November thirtieth for filing so we can collect our, our, our property tax for general, general property tax. Our E M S tax and also our outstanding bond, the voted, voted debt. So Some highlights within, for summary, our implicit price deflator, we talk about that every year. If it's less than, less than one, we require to do a Additional, additional ordinance to be able to collect the full one percent. But as you see here, it's above one, it's at two point four four percent. Did a comparison over assessed valuation from twenty six, just over, you know, still about six point three billion. Difference between twenty five and twenty six was two point eight million dollars. Move my screen for a second. So the estimated total levy limit for the general, general fund is nine point four million. And for EMS is just over three point two million dollars. New construction was estimated, again, these are estimates from the county. New construction was a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars for, again, the general property tax. And new construction for the EMS tax was just over forty three thousand dollars. Couple things, a couple of things to highlight for our taxpayers. We had voted debt for twenty fifteen public safety bonds. Those are fully matured and fully paid off at the end of this year, as of December first will be paid off. So they'll, that will not need to be assessed to pay those in twenty twenty six assessment. The other voted debt that the city has is the twenty ten public safety bonds. You see there, it's about a nine hundred thousand dollar debt service for twenty twenty six. So that will be levied within this ordinance. But to highlight there, that will be coming to the maturity is that is at the end of twenty twenty seven. I was saying the outstanding balance in that is just over one point six million dollars. That's all I have.
Thank you, Director Riley. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept public comment and action is anticipated. And now open the public hearing. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Once again, Mr. Sorensen, can you check online, please?
There are no hands up.
Right? Seeing there's no more public comment or any public comment, I will now close the public hearing. Seeing there's no uh, more public comment or any public comment, I will now close the public hearing. Turn to the council for motion, Councilmember Goodnow.
Move to pass ordinance number five five two five establishing the amount to be collected in two thousand and twenty six by taxation on the assessed evaluation of taxable property within the city limits of Bremerton and setting the property uh, levy rate.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and second, any comments from the council? Councilmember Chamberlain?
Um, okay, so uh, Mr. Riley, can you explain to us what the current, um, is there, this is an increase in the rate that um, our residents are paying now, our, our property owners are paying now, correct?
So with uh, state statute require is capped, there's a one percent increase at the, the city can levy, so there's a one percent increase in property tax.
So we are requesting and to increase it by the full one percent that we're allotted to by state legislature.
Correct.
Um, the other option is that one day, count, the county could potentially come in and, and take that percent, am I correct?
No.
No, okay.
No.
Um, and so what is the difference to the individual taxpayer? For raising this one percent?
I, I don't have the calculation of one percent spread over the community, it's, it's very, it's very, very small. I, I didn't have that question in study session. It's obviously depends on assessed valuation of your home with the one percent, it's all, you know, so I don't have the average increase, but a one percent increase on our ten million, you know, ten, nine point four million dollar uh, property, general property taxes, it's about, you know, ninety thousand dollars spread across the entire city, so.
Ninety thousand dollars spread across?
Entire, all, all repairs in the city of Bremerton, that's any taxpaying business, residential, it's very, 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 very insignificant.
Okay, um, apologies for not asking this in the study session, I, I feel like I, I missed out on getting some good data from you.
I'd be happy to maybe provide then afterwards, just to give, just to know context.
I would like that information, okay. Um, I think that's all that I have, and uh, again, apologies for not asking in study session, which is the right time to ask it. Um, so there are no surprises, but if you do want to provide that information so that I know what the burden is on the individual, um, I'd feel a lot more comfortable for this, I'm going to abstain because I don't have that information, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, anything online from Vice President Rebloski, go ahead, please?
Uh, yes, Director Riley, can you briefly explain um, how folks of lower income or seniors can get a reduction in their property tax, please?
Yes, real quick, if you go on uh, Kitsap County website, uh, there's a place there to file the exemption for either low income or uh, senior status that caps, uh, capture tax exposure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Mokler?
Reduces your waste management bill, too.
Councilmember Frye?
What struck me is, am I correct, that our assessed value went up two million dollars in the year? And uh, you know, the, the lower our assessed value, the less uh, uh, general fund, funds we have to spend, and so I, I just want to make the point that um, Bremerton, if we're, if we're ever going to be able to pay for the services that our community needs, um, we've got to invest uh, in that, uh, in that area of assessed value, so uh, just a different perspective on it.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodnow?
Director Riley, you might be able to add to this, but because, and I don't know how many years it's been now since this, uh, this is like a Tim Iman initiative, I recall. But it, 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 instead of us being able to say, oh, you know, this year we need to, next year we, we go this, the next year maybe we don't do it, you know, we, we're basically falling behind fairly constantly, and it, and it's, it's not exactly the same as like sales tech, we're raising it by a percent, and then in a hundred years, it would be a hundred percent or a hundred and twenty percent. Um, I don't know if you want to just touch on a little bit, how that really happens, thanks.
Yeah, I thi- I think you said it well, it's not like it stacks up to get a hundred percent gain, it's one percent over the, that small, that small change every year, which is, a- as I said, um, with uh, a city, we have a, the general fund, the general fund budget is sixty million dollars, and an increase between, we see anywhere between sixty thousand dollars to seventy five thousand dollars a year in property tax increase, that's not keeping up with costs. So in that cap that you're speaking of, the Iman Initiative was in, I believe, the late, late nineties, um, where you could be up to six percent. And so being capped at one percent, um, I know that there was a conversation this year, the state legislature looking to go to three percent, that failed, that didn't make it to the floor, so, um, but again, that's something, looking at sustainability for, for uh, city government, so.
Thank you, I want to say that the, the whole deal with Tim Iman and Governor Greg Wire is around two thousand one to two thousand three, because I was sitting here at the time, and uh, we, we ended up doing the one percent. Maybe it was late nineties and, but it was, you're close.
I get, I get those confused with the CARTEV initiative as well, that was like MVET, so you, you might, you might be spot on there, but it all blends together, twenty something years ago. So, thank you.
Time flies. All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I call for the question.
Councilmember Rebloski?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Mokler?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Abstain.
Frye?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries, five yeses, one abstention.
Great, so that concludes our public hearing, but we're going to continue with Mr. Riley, but we're going to give our city clerk the opportunity to read the next general business item first before you can continue with your presentation.
Correct. General Bu- business item five A, ordinance number five five two six to amend and reestablish city rates and fees for twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six mid biennium.
Okay, floor is yours, Mr. Riley.
All right, thank you, council, uh, we did a pretty in-depth uh, walkthrough, rate, uh, general rates and fees last week at study session, went through each of, each uh, each department, looked at the changes, um, had a pretty, pretty deep discussion. Uh, so this evening, I don't have a formal presentation, the rates and fees have been provided, provided in the packet, there are, uh, I, I would say the highlights uh, are, if you were to look at the park section, um, there's a lot of, you know, I would say, um, some, some moderate changes uh, that are here, uh, directors here tonight to speak to that if needed, and then also with, again, golf course, or really across the board, there wasn't many changes to the rates and fees.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Tockative group tonight. Mr. Sorenson, anyone online?
There is nobody online.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no more public comment? Seeing none, we'll go to the council for motion. Councilmember Goodnow?
Moved to pass ordinance number five five two six, amending and reestablishing city rates and fees for twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six mid biennium.
Second.
I motion a second, any comments or questions from the council? Councilmember Chamberlain?
I have another question, I didn't ask in study session, I'm sorry. Um, something that, that occurred to me is, um, I mean, we have these rates that were increased for the Ivy Green Cemetery, we're not going to go into that, but mo- the uh, Gold Mountain Golf Course. Um, and so I'm just curious, um, and this is a larger question, I should have asked at study session, so I apologize, but you might have an answer, and if you don't, that's okay, you'll probably follow up with me. Um, Kitsap Conference Center has um, no increases, and they are, uh, you know, it's one of the things that they continue, they do operate at a loss, but they do, they are a revenue generator in general for the, the city in, in its entirety, which is why we support them. Is there any particular reason why we haven't chosen to increase those rates?
So I can answer that, so I will have answered. Yeah, so, so both of the pricing plans, like with you look at golf course, you look at the, the conference center, they're dynamic, they have the ability to do dynamic pricing within their structure, um, and those-
Dynamic pricing meaning?
They can change, they can actually negotiate lower, those are the capped amounts that they can go up to, and so both golf and the conference center go out and do a market analysis across their own,
Right.
Um, you know, their in-kind uh, properties, and so both of them did that, so uh, we have, you know, our professionals that take it, took a look at that with Columbia Hospitality, so on the golf side, they found they needed to make some small corrections to give them that up-to ability.
Okay.
Um, and then on the conference center, they did not see a market analysis to drive the, those up-to costs, they have enough, they felt like they were within those constraints that the council's previously approved.
The market analysis showed that the rates that the, that the conference center is offering are similar to rates of other facilities of their size and capacity.
Of size, capacity, location, uh, what they're negotiating with, what they bring in, yeah.
Okay.
Regionally.
So these are rates that are negotiated by contract, is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct, each one, yeah, each, each individual contractor, they, they conference center, and it's in, in, individual based on needs, IT, infrastructure, all those things, food, so that, that changes their price points and what they can offer.
And so this does not change the contract we have with these organizations, well, this is Columbia Hospitality, both of the, the harbor side.
Yes.
And um, the golf course, um, and so it doesn't change it, it just means that there's uh, dynamic terms within the contracts.
The, these, these limits that are in here is the, the most they can charge, the council's given the authority to, to use with a outside, uh, somebody coming in to rent the facility.
I don't think I ever knew that, so this is my opportunity to learn.
Yes.
Um, I think that's uh, my questions, oh, uh, what's the fee for registering um, chickens again?
I believe twelve fifty.
I would like to make a request, a friendly amendment to lower that to five dollars, and I wanted to see if any of their council members are amenable to that.
So uh, hang on, we're gonna, we're gonna be a, a, official.
Withdraw.
Never mind, uh, our city clerk, for the record, she, she withdrew her.
I don't want to ruffle any feathers.
Oh my goodness. Well, at, at least we're getting a reaction from the crowd on something, so. Yeah, the rolling of the eyes.
Thank you, we don't want to put all our eggs in one basket, so.
Nice, okay, so for the record, it's either Councilmember Coughlin or I have the dad jokes, and you guys are impinging on her to.
I guess I need to fill in.
Any more comments or questions to the council? Seeing none, I call for the question.
Councilmember Rebloski?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Mokler?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, will you read our next ordinance, please?
Yes, item five B, ordinance number five five two seven, to amend and reestablish utility assessments, rates, fees, and charges for twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six mid biennium, again, we have Finance Director Mike Riley.
Okay, thank you, so, um, again, we spent a, a good amount of time going page by page through rates and fees, so I won't, won't bore the council with that. But I do want to, anybody listening at home, this is in your agenda packet three twenty five, there's a lot, a lot of information there. Um, but we do have a summary to go over with rates and fees for the public, um, uh, with what the increases are. Um, and just to give a little back, background, um, with our, with our, our utility rates for uh, water, water, wastewater and stormwater, um, the city adopted back in twenty thirteen a rate model, um, through uh, one of our, one of our consultants, FCS uh, group, and we continually use that and refresh that, that, that model, what that does is, it does a six-year outlook on our utilities and allows us to try to normalize rates, try to smooth those out, so we don't see dramatic increases and dips. So uh, the city's been successful in uh, uh, providing rates uh, for, for about the past decade with a few nuances, um, that, with COVID and other things that have, have come in, come into play, but to be able to normalize those between three, three and a half percent. So uh, what were, was proposed uh, for, for utility rate increases are the water, the water utility will be at three percent, this wastewater utility at three percent, and the stormwater utility at three percent. Uh, other, other fees change, the GFCs that you see changes here are based on the CCI index, it's a five-year average, and that's at three point eight six percent, other charges are based on actual time and materials throughout the document. Uh, last thing to highlight is we always do the comparison, this is on our city website, uh, to our neighboring jurisdictions, uh, as you can see on the board there, uh, this looks at our twenty five and then our twenty six proposed rate, uh, this is taking uh, the average uh, single-family residence, uh, at six hundred cubic feet of, of usage uh, to provide that uh, combined utility rate, and you can see here, um, compared to our neighboring jurisdictions, our proposed rate is a hundred and thirty seven dollars a month in comparison to the next closest one city, Gay Harbor, at a hundred and fifty three, and then you can see the graphic there, it continues to go up, so again, we have the lowest rates in the surrounding community, and we have the highest quality, highest quality water, um, and I look over to our utility folks over there and give them a nod, they continually uh, win awards on the water quality, our wastewater treatment plant continually wins awards with their empty, empty DS permit and all things, and I'll give chance and nod on stormwater, but I don't have much to say about him, so. But, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Director Riley. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Again, Mr. Sorenson, will you check online and see if anyone wants to comment?
There are no hands up.
Seeing none, we'll go to the council for a motion. Councilmember?
Yep.
Move, I need to move the microphone, move to approve ordinance number five, five two six, amending and reestablishing.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, it's five five two seven.
Okay. Nope, I have not had a chance all evening. Um, okay, my bad. Hello, move to pass ordinance number five five two seven, amending and reestablishing assessments, rates, fees, and charges for water, wastewater, stormwater, and other related services for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six mid biennium.
Thank you, do I have a second? I'll second. Councilmember Mokler, any questions or comments on this? Thank you, Councilmember Goodnow?
None.
Yeah.
Of course.
Yes, I'm just so curious, I just, I just love this, I just love talking to Director Riley, he's such a friendly chap. Um, I, we talked about market analysis, um, and this looks sort of like a market analysis, but is there any reason to believe why? It might be more expensive for a smaller community like Baybridge Island to have their, to have a, you know, water service. Um, where Bremerton, we're centralized, we're larger, we have the infrastructure, I mean, I guess that's something that I'm missing from this is not just a comparison of rates um, to other jurisdictions, but why, you know, and this isn't a large increase, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go for it. But I think that what I am curious about is how much do we pay per gallon or for processing or things like that compared to other jurisdictions and their, and their infrastructure?
So I don't, I don't have that information, nor do you, but I, what I will say is the utilities are required by law, you can't just make a profit. You can't just say, I'm going to make two hundred thousand dollars and put it in the bucket. What, what it does, it takes cost of service, so what, what the utility costs and the recovery to pay that, to make, and there's a revenue requirement, is how we set our rates, so it is strictly built on what the, what, what our utility costs to run. And then we, and then that factors in, okay, we need this much revenue, and then we have to have a reserve component for the debt we issue against it to do infrastructure improvements.
Okay.
And so that's how those are set, and that's how all utilities are set, and so it, it, you know, it's comparable. So I would say there's a order of size, so, you know, our residents, we can spread out that cost across more users, so Baybridge Island, that, you know, that's, they have less users, there could be similar costs, it, uh, some, some of the same infrastructure. Some other jurisdictions have to pay for water, uh, City Bremerton is not, uh, you see in the contract, there's, for our outside, outside non-residents pay a certain fee, we also have City Port Orchard that has to buy water from us, um, that drives some of their cost up. Again, our, our, uh, what I call an asset, it's an asset, um, our watershed, our protect, our reservoir, the dam, the people that work in uh, the forestry division, the water resource division, those are all assets, and I, I think the council, I, I, I think all the council's been on the tour that Public Works puts on, I believe, if you haven't, sign up for it. Um, I've lived here my entire life, did not know some of the things that we have here, it, it's a gem, there, it's uh, um, again, I, we speak of those water quality awards, the water pack awards, the things that we tout in uh, the utility billing office, we talk about that. Um, those are, that, that's what, again, keeps our rates low, um, so, thank you.
Protection of the watershed is what keeps the rates low, essentially.
Uh, you'll discuss in that next time, there, there are things that control that. It's all things, it's the-
Isn't that amazing? The protecting the watershed keeps rates low for, for our users, okay, thank you, that's all.
Councilmember Mokler, thank you, Councilmember Mokler.
Thanks, um, trying to save Jane's voice here, um, Director Riley, could you briefly explain how senior and disabled people can get a discount on their water rates?
Yes, would love to. Yes, would love to. So if you look in the rates and fees, they receive a forty percent discount, just to call that out. Uh, there's multiple ways. So we have a, uh, through Kitsap Community Resources, we have a voucher program. You can apply for the discount through them. They provide the voucher to City of Bremerton. We apply that to your account. In the last year, the City of Bremerton has actually allowed customers to come to our counter and apply directly to us, either online or in person. And and be able to deliver those forms to apply that discount to your, to your account. We do an uh, require that to be, and, you know, come in annually to do uh, income verification. Um, not, there's also the um, senior discount as well. We don't need to keep verifying your senior eligibility. But uh, with the income dis, income, uh, we do that on an annual basis. So. Uh, do we have any questions from Vice President Rebelowski? Okay. So, no further questions. Call for the question.
Councilmember Goodnow?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Rebelowski?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is item five C, resolution number three, four, zero, six, to adopt the twenty twenty-five utility land management plan. Our presenter is Forestry Manager Sean Walsh.
Welcome, Mr. Walsh. The floor is yours.
Good evening, council. I'll be brief. So we're here to present on the utility land management plan. And uh, I'd like to invite Wendy Wentie and Brent Keller from Mason Bruce Gerard to come up and present. And I just want to thank them very much for their hard work on this project.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors and the public. Just uh, I'm gonna walk us through the slides that we talked about at the study session. And I'll, I'll hand it over to Brent Keller, who was the lead forester. I was the project manager from Mason Bruce and Gerard on the project. So um, yeah, so a little bit of background, just to bring everybody forward. City owns and manages eight thousand acres of utility lands roughly, of which approximately three thousand of them are in the Union River watershed. This was a plan, there was a plan that was originally created back in nineteen eighty-six, and so it is very out of date. It was updated in nineteen ninety-six, but it was due for an update. And so uh, the city uh, contracted with Mason Bruce and Gerard and our team to update the plan. Which also includes some special topic memos, which were standalone summary memoranda that uh, were investigating certain topics. And we'll go through a list of that here in a minute. Where are we in the project schedule? So in December twenty twenty-four, this is just a recent accounting of where we've been through the steps. We went through our advisory committees meeting on the special topics and discussed that with the advisory committee. And then through April and May of twenty twenty-five, we, we attended a study session for the city council that was on the special topics. And then we presented the draft updated plan to the advisory committee. In June, we had our city council study session to review the draft plan when it was released for public comment. And then in October and November, the, that's, so it was October and then November today, we have the final updated plan presented to the city council. So the plan overview, what does it include? So there are a number of parts to this plan. It's in the packet, but it should also be available online. Uh, the land management goals, we uh, looked at the existing conditions, but actually just to back up to the land management goals. The primary goal was to maintain the unfiltered water source status. And then also to generate revenue, but in the context of water resource protection and forest health. Um, and so we did also look at the existing conditions. We basically updated the baseline for the plan. And that included things like the property description, a description of water uses, and the infrastructure. We completed a watershed assessment, which looked at resources such as wildlife habitat and riparian areas. And we completed a forest resources assessment, which was a forest inventory. We looked at the road system and did some harvest planning. Uh, some other pieces to this, we um, investigated the sustainable harvest level. And we looked at the harvest level split between the McKenna Falls sub-basin and the other utility lands. We also worked on an implementation plan, which includes the harvest methods, reforestation, um, approaches. And the adaptive management approaches for the land. We also prepared a forestry capital improvement plan, which includes the water rate analysis. That was, that was completed by F C S group, who has worked for you on other projects, but they completed the water rate analysis for this as well. And then we looked at your roads, bridges, and buildings, your infrastructure that you have out on the property. And then we looked through the special topics. And those were nine topics. The one that's in italics was one that was added during the process of developing the plan. But the other eight were special topics that were identified early in the process. And they included things like um, concerns with security, adjacent land use and potential conflicts. There were utility impacts from the proposed Jarstead Park to Kitsap Lake Trail, so that had its own special topic. Then we prepared a memorandum on sustainable timber harvest alternatives and the associated revenue that those could generate. We looked at water rate impacts of the timber harvest um, revenue. And then water rate impacts of a filtration plant that was added. And then potential revenue generation from carbon credits. A twenty-year forestry asset capital improvement plan and a staffing level evaluation. And all of these were used to inform the draft final plan that was presented to you at the special um, at the study session, sorry. So topics that generated discussion at the A C meetings, this was our advisory committee meetings. These included the water rates, uh, maintaining the unfiltered status, security challenges that face the property. Potential impacts of the proposed um, trail on utility land management. The sustainable harvest and adaptive management uh, practices, the carbon credit opportunities, and then maintaining tribal access. And I am going to pass it to Brent, who was the lead forester on the project.
See, this is high enough here. Thank you, council. My name is Brent Keller. And one of the key tops of topics we looked at was the water rate impacts um, based on the level of harvest. So obviously, the, the, the more you harvest, the lower the rates will be. But you can see bottom line, the difference between no harvest and the greatest amount of harvest that we analyze. We just looked at, at a sixty-year rotation, fifty-year rotation, because we, we, the scope um, charged us with. With, you know, mimicking the Loosignan analysis from years ago. So that was the methodology we use, looking at fifty and sixty-year rotation. But if you um, look at no harvest versus um, a sixty-year, or I'm sorry, no harvest versus a fifty-year rotation. There's about a five-dollar difference between um, the two in ten years uh, per month. So that's the, that's the relative amount of impact there. Am I moving the slides? Okay. Next slide, please. I would looked at the impact of uh, water filtration plant um, construction. And of course, I think a lot of what drives the management plan in general is maintaining this unfiltered status. Well, if that was, was jeopardized or lost, then you had to move to building um, an actual treatment plant. Um, it's quite a range, but at the high end, um, it would, it would double current rates. Or I'm sorry, at the high end, it would, rates would go up by over six times. At the very least, it would double, double rate. So that's something to consider when um. You, you know, looking at impacts to the, to the watershed that could jeopardize that unfiltered status. We looked at security um, in terms of infrastructure and procedures, analyzed the, the current uh, way the watersheds secured. And prevented recommendations to improve security out there. Looked at adjacent land use and potential conflicts. This is very important, especially as the area grows and there's more pressure from. Uh, particularly residential development right against the watershed. Most of the neighbors are pretty benign in terms of their impact to, to the water. Shed, security and, and water quality. Um, so besides that large residential area, it's right against the watershed, you've, and our utility lands, I should say. Um, you've got industrial tree farms and government lands and then tribal lands as well. And as is always the case um. With the piece, any kind of timberland, it'll, you know, requires ongoing collaboration with adjacent landowners um. As you look to maintain the integrity of the utility land uh, and, and the water quality. And then it's always important to have an eye out or to look at possible acquisition of adjacent lands. The more you can block that up, uh, will, you know, better secure your property. And further protect the resource as well as those opportunities are out there. Uh, this is a, a real hot topic. Uh, we addressed as part of the process of the developing the management plan. Uh, reviewing potential impacts on security, unfiltered service water status, current operations and staffing in relation to this Jarstead Park to Kitsap Lake Trail. Idea. You know, in terms of conflicting news, security, uh, threat to unfiltered source water status, you know, this, this is something identified by State Department of Health. You can see the letter from them um, imprinted on the slide there. I would looked at uh, you know, the planning and consistency, environmental considerations, of course, and cost, you know, like significant cost out there would. You, you know, in the course of making sure you maintain that unfiltered status, if this trail went in, you'd certainly have to have increased staff. And uh, security, then we looked just roughly at like, the idea of fencing along this trail to make sure folks stay on the trail. And you could, that alone, you could be looking at the better part of a million dollars, so. Uh, some serious considerations there. A lot went into this, the numbers you see here as far as the calculations um. If you look at the special topics memo and, and where this is at in the actual plan. But this shows a rundown um, of four alternatives, you know, no harvest, uh, which would mean no, no volume harvested, no revenue. The current program, uh, the average annual volume harvested is a little over a million board feet with the, about five hundred thousand dollars in net revenue. Based on the inventory. Um, you know, the average pricing and, and volumes, uh, a fifty-year rotation. And by fifty-year rotation, that means you'd be harvesting, you know, fiftieth um, of the lands outside. I should back up a little bit. So we, in the process of, of pinning this down. And based on some previous studies, we just, we fixed the amount of, of harvest within the actual um, basin. And. And I believe, like, based on what's gone on in there, yeah, which is, I think, around twenty-five acres. So that's fixed that, I think about half a million feet a year. And then we looked at what's sustainable out on the, of, on the lands outside that. So we didn't, we didn't look at what's the max we could sustainably harvest within the basin. That was just a fixed volume. And so with a limited union basin harvest, um, on a fifty-year rotation where you harvest a fiftieth of those lands outside the basin annually. And so at the end of fifty years, you're going back in theory to that, the original fiftieth of the property. Fifty-year rotation, you, you harvesting about two point seven five million board feet annually, and with an annual estimated revenue of. About one and a quarter million dollars, and then a sixty-year rotation, where you're harvesting a sixtieth of the property each year. You're at two point three five uh, million board feet annually, a little over a million dollars. In annual, potential annual net revenue. We looked at, this is a um. A topic with a lot of interest from folks. We look, and which is carbon credits, we looked at potential revenue generation from carbon as an alternative to timber. Um, and as we found, looking at other properties over the years, it's, it's uh, there's, I think, women opportunity for Bremerton, at least the way, with the way. The carbon market and system is structured currently, it's just, it's a very small land base. To generate cost of credits, there's not as much um, opportunity for additional carbon storage, which is a key part of the, the program. So that's something to continue looking at over time as these programs um, develop. And then, uh, very important, uh, to maintain tribal access. We said, covered this and, you know, as part of the security processes and procedures, special topic. Uh, evidently, Suklamish tribe would like to formalize access to, to uh, continue harvesting, which red cedar bark and other alternative forest products. And I understand the city's currently reviewing the process and documentation uh, necessary to formalize an agreement with the tribe. Part of the process was um, uh, very extensive uh, public involvement. Uh, piece, and those public comments are provided in the plan. But the comments we mostly received, uh, focused on recreational access, you know, a lot of um. Interest in that trail and, and, and other connectivity. Uh, water quality, of course, is, is key and important um, of interest to folks, of course. Uh, the different types of proposed forestment, forest management activities, and then possible forest certification like um, F S C. Or one of those type of certifications. So that's a quick look at the plan and open it up for additional comments, discussion, questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, excellent presentation, considering there's in a packet, if you want more information, there's about a hundred and forty-five page report for you to pre-use on your own um, time. So, does any member of the public wish to comment on this side? Go ahead. Great.
Hi, um, I was, my name is Alden Bradford, live in Bremerton. I was just looking through the packet here and I'm looking at sustainable harvest levels. Um, it says it's the amount that can be harvested annually from a given land base on a perpetual basis without reducing the total merchantable volume. And so that seems to me to be basically an economically sustainable definition. Um, but I'm kind of more interested in, in ecologically sustainable definition, and I kind of worry that you go through a procedure where. Uh, you're harvesting every sixty years from a piece of land, then, well, no part of your forest will ever be older than sixty years. And I think you might really lose something valuable about a forest by adopting that type of strategy. Um, you know, we rely on this forest in particular for our clean water, our award-winning water. Um, and I know that there's some things that a seventy-year-old tree can do that a sixty-year-old tree just can't in terms of. Maintaining the soil, maintaining habitat for animals. Um, so I hope you can. I'm not an expert in forestry, but I'd be interested to hear more about that. I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bradford. So the way I understood it wasn't necessarily a question, but uh, Mr. Walsh, you have the opportunity, if you want to address anything that was just brought up.
Do, do we want to do all the public comment and then we can address, or do you want to do it with each individual public?
I think we've only got two people, so let's go each individual, keep it fresh in our mind.
Okay. Yeah, so um, yeah, I, I really appreciate your comment and, you know, the, I guess the, the question is, is our decision economically? I guess the the question is, is our decision economically only driven is, I guess, would be the the question. So. For sustainability, right, you're looking at three different aspects, right? You're looking at social, economic and environmental considerations when you talk sustainability. And so when you're looking at forestry, you're essentially deciding. Based upon what your management objectives are, kind of how you're going to manage your lands. So our management is much different than, say, a. Warehouse or some other, you know, company that's trying to maximize revenue. A six year rotation is a more conservative harvest rotation for Western Washington for a timber company. Their harvest rotation to maximize revenue is going to be thirty five to forty years of age. So. I I would say that our main goal is not economics, it's a benefit. And in terms of the question of ecological driven forestry. We're regulated by the Washington Department of Natural Resources Forest Practices and. There are very strict regulations that require us to essentially. You know, people hear harvest and they think of a, you know, essentially barren wasteland. In reality, we're required to leave trees and. Go above and beyond for protection of our resources and we're lucky to live in a state that has some of the most stringent and restrictive forest practices. So. I I guess my my answer would be is we do have an economic component of it. We will not harvest every single tree that's out there, that 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 will never happen and we take that in consideration when we go to harvest. And as Brent stated, a six year rotation is, you know, a sixtieth of your ownership, we have eight thousand acres. And, you know, there's different reasons we do not harvest, whether it's unstable. Water quality concerns and and those would remain. And so that's part of what we look at when we plan for timber harvest.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next question or comment from the public, please?
I hope. I hope this isn't too many questions, but I'd have a lot after.
Sir, if you'd like to state your name for the record, you're welcome to.
Certainly, my name is Dave Winslow. Current concerns, reseeding wildlife. There's a displacement and trauma response to logging that's pretty inevitable from what I've read and studied. So you have bird habitat and migratory patterns where they do and don't come back to create nests for their young. I was wondering if involved in this plan, there would be an intentional effort to replace that lost wildlife. To give them new conditional habitat while the logging is going on and how that, how that might be accomplished. I had concerns about the age of trees collected, which I think was already addressed. To some limited degree, but it seems to me that sixty years is a fairly young tree. So I'm wondering. At at what point are the trees going to be excluded from potential harvest? Is it a hundred years or three hundred years? Right. I was also wondering about soil erosion consequences, there being as much below ground as there is above ground. When you cut down a tree or a section of tree, obviously you're creating soil instability. And in the event of a heavy rain in a clear cut area, obviously you've got water now sediment in your perfectly fresh, unfiltered water. And that's, that's a real concern. The more logging happening on a regular basis, obviously you have other impacts. Oil coming off of logging vehicles. We talk about human impact on the trail. I don't know if it's been considered as an alternate form of revenue. Rather than logging, rather than pulling or clear cutting any section, why not have a hiking pass? Which indicates that you've been trained. To treat the environment with respect. Good once a year. So if you needed revenue to maintain a protected area like that, there are certainly alternate methods. I'm not sure that. A harvest of trees is necessarily the best way to go about it. Finally, a a natural fall harvest would be a real question of mine. It's been addressed in the report that carbon sequestration has already reached near maximum volume capacity for that land. And that was part of the reason why. Clearcutting or or pardon me, harvesting sections would be desirable. But it seems to me that nature will sort that out. Some of the trees will naturally fall and die in various seasons, pick those up and move on. Rather than intentionally creating logging territory. It seems that the city could invest. In land particularly for logging. That has no impact on the water quality. And why not do that? We have lots of infill in the city that's been going on. Obviously doubling or tripling the population. Pardon, I'll be quiet, but I have lots and lots of questions about this watershed, so, so excuse me.
Yeah, thank you. I I forgot to remind, three minutes count, so you you did a great job of wrapping it up. So. Mr. Walsh, you and or your, with your team's assistance, that's a lot to unpack. I'm not sure you remembered all the questions and, but whatever you feel comfortable with answering, you're welcome to do so.
Yeah, and feel free to to stop me if I miss any of your questions. So I'll I'll start with the first one. It was related to the impact to wildlife with logging. Specifically to birds, correct, migratory birds. So. As part of the plan, we we assess for wildlife and looked at, you know, what's existing. Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now? There we go.
We we had two fairly tall people speaking as a tall person myself. No slight to you, sir, but yeah, just in the microphone.
I'm I'm average height, I've accepted it at this point. But yes, so related to wildlife impacts. Studies have 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 shown that wildlife depends on essentially a mosaic of habitat and. A lot of what I've read and researched done is essentially looked at, you know, especially songbirds. Is, you know, the impact of what's called early cereal habitat. So that's your, where there's been a recent disturbance and. You have younger flowering plants that also have fruiting bodies that these birds rely upon. And so that's essentially what logging is emulating when you do a clear cut. It's essentially you're emulating a disturbance such as a wind event mortality and essentially creating those conditions. So. In terms of impacts to birds, as part of the forest practices, we're we're also under the Endangered Species Act. So there's strict. Regulation related to different species and I don't know if Wendy had anything additional related to wildlife.
I would also mention that because of the way the. Landscape works, so you end up with this mosaic that Sean was just talking about of some early cereal habitat patches, which are. Mimicked by the clear cuts, but then you also have the buffers that are maintained along the streams. And so you do have this mosaic. That is maintained over time across the landscape. And one thing I would mention just from talking to them as well is that my understanding is that they're taking. Relatively small patches out, so it's like a twenty five ish acre clear cut at a time. Which truly can mimic a natural disturbance. That size of acreage is small compared to what you would see on industrial forest lands.
And then I believe the the second question was related to age, age of trees. Yeah. So this is related to essentially, there's a bar graph in the handout that indicates kind of what our current ownership looks like. As I've mentioned previously in other presentations, the Union Drainage burned essentially in the in the thirties and completely essentially was a stand replacement. Event. And so that those three thousand acres were essentially regenerated at the same time and we have essentially. Majority of our ownership is sixty years plus because that is when it has come back. So that that six year rotation is essentially based on several factors, including. What current markets are looking at in terms of log size, as well as talking about looking at. Essentially when Douglas fir starts essentially, which is our primary tree. Essentially slowing down in growth. And so those are the kind of the considerations and sixty years is essentially. Looking at essentially an age where we can still market it and it also is at a point where it's essentially. Slowed down to the point where it's at a point for getting new, younger trees in there that sequester more carbon. Yeah, so. So all, anything related to forestry is in the water fund. So. Anything for revenue would have to be something that generates in a benefit for the water utility. So. If we were to hypothetically create a trail that you you charge a ticket to get access to, or that, as you stated, have someone with a, that is educated. And has a pass, we would still have to indicate that we're not stepping back and creating a potential risk for ourselves by having people out there on the utility. But honestly, I I don't think we've looked at generating revenue from recreation. We do generate some revenue from, you know, the Gold Mountain Golf Course being on the property as well as the communication towers. So we do have alternate revenue sources besides timber harvest that that go towards the water utility. Final one was related to. Yeah, so for for soil erosion, that that's, that's our biggest concern that and that's where the harvest planning is key. And as I mentioned, we have the forest practice rules. Which are, you know, protective of our resources. And then we go above and beyond that because we have those, that concern of water quality and understanding that's our utmost priority. In terms of erosion, it's, we're looking for those steeper slopes and. Anything that could create essentially a risk for erosion that could potentially impact our resources and. Doing whatever we can to make sure that that's not an issue. And then in terms of salvage from. I think you mentioned any sort of death or mortality, that that sort of stuff, natural fall. Yeah, yeah. So that that's, that is something that we've practiced in the past. The challenge is. Operationally, it's very cost prohibitive, but it's something where. I think there, there's been a lot of talks of, you know, clear cutting versus timber harvest. And, you know, I just want to. Address that clear cutting is part of timber harvest, but there's different what's called civic cultural options. Civic culture is the management and growth of trees for those that. Drink wine, know there's veniculture, it's, it's the same thing just for growing trees. And so as a forester, I'm going out there with tools in my tool belt of. How I can manage the forest and those are different options that I'm looking at based upon the ecology of of these trees to make sure that. I'm doing whatever I can to maximize the protection and the resource, as Mr. Riley stated, for this precious asset that is the cities.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. I appreciate it. I think you went above and beyond answering questions, in my opinion, so excellent job, sir. Mr. Sorensen, is there anyone online?
There's no hands up.
Okay, thank you. Last call for the public. See no more questions or comments from the public. And I see a motion from the council.
I move to approve resolution number three, four, oh, six to adopt the. Twenty twenty five utility land management plan and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute the plan with substantially the same terms and conditions as presented.
Second.
There we have a motion of second. Now we're open up for discussion. Councilmember Friday.
Yeah, boy, has there been a lot of conversation about this. And there's been a lot of passion and and different perspectives. It's been really vibrant. I truly appreciate somebody who comes in with, obviously, you know, your background and knowledge. I'm not remembering your name. I'm sorry, but. Wow, thank you for being here and and Sean, your ability to remember what he was asking and and then answer it. I loved that exchange. I really did. And. You know, I. I have to disclose my biases. I'm a hiker. And I love that dam. That dam and our water, as far as I'm concerned, is our greatest asset. So I take that very seriously. And as a hiker. You know, I'd love to see a trail where people can enjoy and have a north, south ramp. And, you know, Michael Goodnow, you remember I'm an and girl. I don't like the ors. I like the ands. So. I'm hoping that we can figure all that stuff down the road. I think you've done an exemplary job trying to balance. You know, all of those perspectives, all of those needs, our values, you know, core values. And monies involved and how would that be invested? We've got some critical. Management decisions to be made as we move down the road. And I know that there will be touch points. On that where we'll get an opportunity again to discuss and and weigh in. So. For that reason, I moved to to approve this and I appreciate the time and the passion. From from everybody involved so far and it's not over yet, so it'll continue. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain.
Sure thing. Okay, can we look at that? Is it possible to look at the slide again that has the Department of Health a letter on it and it has? The J to K path. On it. I I didn't we ever receive, did we ever get a copy like that you can actually read of the Department of Health letter sent to us? I'm looking at, I'm sorry, did we ever receive that? Okay. I, is it included in our packet? Okay, thank you. There's a lot of pages to this one. But I wanted to take a look at that slide again, if it's possible, because the slide that has the Department of Health, it's like a little letter. It's like a, let me look at the page, which page number is. And I'm sorry, it's different in. Different in our packet. Number twelve? There it is. Okay, apologies. Okay. So. I I I'm curious. I I guess this is not a very topographical. Representation of the potential J to K trail. It's just kind of a line. It shows how close it is to the watershed. But it's not topographical. And so my understanding. And I don't, I'm not the depart, I'm not a Department of Health professional by any means. I'm not a forester. This is not my job. I'm just a citizen here to ask questions for the other people in my city, right? And there is a very strong interest in this J to K trail. So topographically speaking, it. I believe that near the watershed where this trail is proposed, that there's actually an elevation. Right? From where the trail is, there's elevation and then a de- decline. Am I correct in remembering what the topograph, the topography is?
Yeah, so so you're correct. The proposed location was chosen because it's it's flat and to the, would be the west there, it starts to have a rise. And you start having a little bit of hills with increase in slope.
Which hikers will hike, but at the same, like, the average person probably, is it still something that's accessible to the average hiker to hike through and create their own trails? Is that part of the concern? Because I I've seen the trails we make on our own. I'm on Green Mountain all the time. There's lots of trails that are not trails. But is that part of the concern that we're, that hikers are going to make their own trails in that elevated space?
So so that is essentially part of what DOH is stating here is that. So our our current stance is to not allow for public access. So if we were to change that stance. They have concerns that that's a change in our, essentially our security practices. And so. They're not stating, don't do the trail, don't do the trail. They have, they have no say in terms of. Thou shalt. They're just saying be concerned that if you can't show us that you are keeping people out. And you are continuing to make an effort, but people are still making their way in, that they'll essentially have. Future, essentially, they'll need to see future progress or essentially have to go to filtration.
So one second, so we, so we say germane to this topic. It's it's a lot to unpack, but this vote tonight is not for or against the Jarstead Park trail. This was an addendum in the packet. And the findings are what the findings are. But we're not voting on that.
That's fair. So just a couple of other things or just one other thing. So one of the question that was unanswered. From Mr. Winslow was, do we have any areas? Outside of this watershed that we specifically can develop for logging or that's further away from the watershed? Is that still germane? We're just gonna, I'm just gonna do it anyway.
So so I I guess the 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 city purchased the watershed and utility land specifically for. The watershed and the utilities as buffer. And so if. And so if we were to go and secure additional lands elsewhere, like it it has to be for the purpose of benefiting the water utility. So if we wanted to go purchase other lands, whether to secure the watershed, own more of the Union Drainage, I think we could justify that. But going going elsewhere to purchase just for logging, I don't think there's, there's really not much area around there.
I don't think that, I don't think that the question was, do we have, are we going to purchase more? I think the question was more along the lines of, is, are there any parcels that are more suitable further away? Just something to explore? Maybe that's a, that's a, then we can talk about later.
And and I guess, I guess to answer that question, that that is why we have two different harvest proposals, right? So we have the fixed harvest within the Union Basin. And then we have the 50 or 60 year rotation on other utility lands. So the other utility lands are essentially away from the drainage area. And so those are areas where that'll be higher logging compared to the Union Basin. But it's it's still lower than if we were an industrial landowner.
Okay, thank you. That's all for now.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Councilman Mockler, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Walsh.
Good evening.
I should just start out by saying I think you're a really good civoculturalist.
Thank you.
And I think you're a really good forester. And I've only had a little experience with how well you manage a project, but what I've seen is good. So I'm activated here by dread. I have extreme dread that our water quality will be impacted by the siltation. And and can you clarify this for me, please, Mr. Walsh? You seem to use, you seem to use the terms Union Basin and Mechanical Falls intake sub-basin interchangeably?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go with the short one, Union Basin. Okay. That we all looked at the Riparian buffers map two weeks ago and saw the numerous bald spots. And so my dread is that siltation will build up and impact our water quality. And we will be forced to build a filtration plant. The high cost of the filtration plant is 459.8 million. And the annual operating costs would be 16 million. I know that's for the high cost. But it's, that inspires me with dread since our budget for this year is about 258 million. So based on that, I'd just like to ask as few questions as I possibly can. Any rev, any additional revenues will remain within the water utility, right?
That that is correct. Any revenue we generate stays within the water fund.
Okay, and it, your reserve right now is fairly comfortable?
The last I looked, the water fund was healthy.
The water utility reserve is fairly comfortable?
Yes.
So that's one question. I'm just not really understanding why there's a need for more revenue when things are working as they are. Could you perhaps clarify that, Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, I I'll just go back to, so the, I I guess there's a, there's a couple of questions there. So I'll I'll start with the first one of the concern of siltation and sedimentation forming in the Union. And as we discussed at study session, we've been doing active forest management within the Union since the 80s. And we have been able to keep in unfiltered status that whole time. And we are not proposing anything significant in change for management within the Union Drainage. The the 25 acres of fixed harvest is based upon previous prac practices. And that is what we've done. And that is what we're proposing. We're not proposing increased harvest. It it's simply just based upon what past past practices have shown that we will not lead to sedimentation. And I'll just go back to the the discussion of money. More related to sentimentation, you know, everything we do is with the main goal of water quality. That that's our number one goal. So related to that is is revenue, right? So our our main objective is not revenue. That's just not what we do. It's an added benefit. And if we were an industrial timberland owner, we could be generating significantly a lot more money. It's just, that's the truth.
Sure.
But we've made the choice, and that is our goal is to manage for water quality. And that is what we will continue to do. And so the goal of the timber harvest within the Union Drainage is to improve forest health. That that's what it's always been and would it always be if timber harvest is to continue. And so what that looks like is, as I've been discussing previously, is essentially trying to capture that mortality, capture the root rot, and essentially create more biodiverse. And I think there's evidence that active forest management is necessary to deal with issues such as climate change.
Can I, I I'm so sorry. Can we just finish the financial thing and then move on to ecology? Is that okay? Like, so what do you need the extra revenue for?
So so the revenue is essentially going back in towards essentially funding forestry projects and goes back into the water fund and essentially funds road improvement projects, fish barrier projects, anything that can be related to essentially the forestry world. But as I stated, it goes back into the water fund. So it could be anything related to the water capital projects.
Okay, thank you. That was a really clear answer. Back in 2019, the, I think it was still Kathleen Cahall then, anyhow, the Water slash Forestry Department ordered a study from the U Dub by Mr. Semler. Mr. Semler states that laminated root rot is diffuse. It's throughout the forest. And therefore, trying to remove pockets of it in general isn't going to work. But I thought a really interesting statement that Mr. Semler made in our packet is that if you were managing this forest for water quality, he recommended what works out to be about 100-year rotation for the Union River Basin. In the next paragraph, the draft plan states that Lucignan Forestry, who, as we all know, are the broker for any timber harvesting on water utility lands, preferred a 50 to 60 year rotation. And the, it was decided that that was the more practical solution. I was wondering why the advice of the University of Washington Forestry was rejected.
So so it it was not. So I I think there's some confusion here of we're proposing 25 acres of fixed harvest within the Union Basin area. That is essentially equivalent to about an 80 to 100-year rotation. And then we're proposing either a 50 or 60-year rotation in all the other lands that do not contribute to the Union Basin.
Like in the Gorst.
Yeah, yes. So the the other portions that don't contribute to the reservoir. And so what he he talks about in his report is he essentially proposes several options and talks about essentially, here are your different civocultural opportunities to essentially eradicate root rot and also deal with wildfire risk. And so, you know, the the first option he proposes is no, no, no management. But he talks and goes into further discussion and saying that, yes, you won't create any issues, but then you'll all have issues further down the road, long time of mortality, which could lead to erosion. And so then the option two is the full eradication of laminated root rot through harvest with some interesting proposals of even creating full fenced off areas with removal of stops.
That was his option two. Yeah, his option one was do nothing.
Correct. And so that that's pretty standard for a forestry management document where he's not saying any of these options are preferred. He's just saying, these are all your alternatives, just like how we did for our management plan. We had a no harvest option. We had a 50 year rotation. We had a 60 year rotation. That that's pretty standard for even like a, you look at a SEPA document where you have all the alternatives. It just happens to be the first one is called option one, when it could have been option A, option, I don't, triangle. They just have to give it a nomenclature.
Just happened to be his first prefer.
He just, he just happened to call it option one. So but if if you read his report, he does state in there that essentially all these options are civoculturally possible as long as it's fiscally possible for the city.
Yeah, well, you know, economically, doing nothing is the simplest. I'm not going to go on at length on this because I don't have the votes. And I'm tired of beating my head up against a brick wall here. We are about to approve a plan in which council has no, no oversight with a great risk. And I I believe will be the only person voting against it. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, for your time. Mr. Keller, I, Ms. Winty? Yes, thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you. This is Councilmember Revolovsky having a comment. Dave, could you check online and see if her hands up? Go ahead, please. Yeah.
Hello, thank you. I think part of the the discussion that could be made clearer to the public is how many acres drain into the Union River? And then how many acres of land that surround this area that this report proposes, if we wanted to, that we could do some additional timber harvest? Because they're two distinct areas. The part portion that drains into the Union River and into our dam, if I understand it correctly, we're removing approximately 25 acres worth per year. Is that correct?
That that is correct.
Okay, and so your other proposals for a 50-year rotation would be 2% of utility lands. Or if it's a 60-year rotation, it could be up to 1.7%. But I do believe that council certainly could have oversight just by you doing a plan each year of where you wanted to harvest, how many acres you wanted to harvest, bring it to the Public Works Committee, discuss it there. And then Public Works Chair could come in and give a report to council. And if there was more information needed, it could be requested. But I think that is a good way of doing oversight without without questioning every single move you make, I guess. And then some of the things that really struck me in this plan was, and I was happy that it shows in the plan, but I don't think, I'm not sure others realize how important it is, is that the zoning needs to be modified for any residential or industrial activity adjacent to our utility lands. And that includes both the city of Bremerton and Kitsap County. Because fire is our biggest danger of losing our our water source. And so I really hope that that is paid attention to by community development in both the city and the county, because that is, to me, the biggest fear. And then I know this isn't about the J to K trail at all, that we're not voting on this. The plan certainly pointed out things that were of concern. But I'm also concerned that that there's not going to be a bridge over course for in my lifetime. So we do need to work with landowners, including the city, to find a place where we can have a north-south trail. So pedestrians and cyclists and hikers and all residents would have a way to get from the city of Bremerton to the city of Port Orchard, because right now it's impossible unless you're in a car. So I appreciate all the the work you've done on this. And I hope that we can put into effect that you would come to the Public Works Committee at the beginning of the year and tell us what you would like to do, give us a couple of options with areas that you would like to harvest or not harvest. And have a broad discussion there that the public can watch in Public Works Committee meetings. And then they can bring it up at City Council when we discuss it here. But I appreciate all the work and I will be voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions in council, Councilmember Chairman?
Yeah, to to Councilor Revolowski's point, what would that look like? To have a plan to request that for a harvest plan, a harvest request that it comes through public course? What would that look like? Can you talk to me about what that might look like?
Are you talking, do I have permission to talk?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, then I think the city attorney would like to weigh in, maybe.
Either one of us can.
Okay.
Jane, did you want to?
Jane, Councilor Revolowski.
Go ahead.
Well, off, currently, I'm the chair of the Public Works Committee. And typically, anything that comes to council that's related to anything that the Public Works Division does, we get a very thorough discussion going, you know? And then I, in turn, either give a report or staff comes and with their proposal to council. And then we all have a discussion of a study session. So I think it could be done the same way. I mean, obviously, Mr. Walsh has to have a plan before he goes to the timber company to order up the harvest. So before it gets sent on to the the timber company, we could look at it and discuss it.
Sure. What I'm, what I really mean specifically is, do we need to have an ordinance in place or any kind of a policy in place for that to be required to come through public works? What would that look like?
Yeah, so Attorney Finella, I'll let you talk about that. But basically, what I see is Councilmember Revolowski mentioning that we could put up guardrails in the future, but we don't have to do that tonight. Tonight's action is to whether we want to approve this comprehensive plan that was done.
And just, I'm just, I just want to speak to Councilor Mockler's point that we're approving a plan with no oversight. And I want assurance that we have a safeguard to to put in oversight.
Can I, can I actually chime in regarding that? So similar to the the harvests coming to public works, I mean, everything in our forestry budget has to come to council for approval. So I I would, I would respectfully disagree that there there are no guardrails, right? We, everything we do has to come through public works approval and budget approval. And so I, that's where there's the chance to provide feedback.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make one of the point that was missed before. It was another question that Mr. Winslow had. A hiking pass seems pretty interesting. Would also be a progressive revenue stream, just throwing that out there if they paid for this hiking pass.
Councilmember Mockler, go ahead.
So, Mr. Walsh, do you need council approval to complete a Forest Practices Act application?
I do not, no.
Ah, that's, that's the the application to the Department of Natural Resources that permits you to, either does or does not permit you to to clear cut the number of acres. I am only saying clear cut because your own report says that this forest has been thinned about as far as it can be.
So no worries. Again, if the if the council, and I suggest, we could put this on the the work plan early in January 26th, if the majority of the council wants to address putting specific guardrails, including what you just mentioned, that's within the purview of the council. But for tonight, we have this management plan in in front of us. And the the question is, do we want to approve this comprehensive management plan?
And and I'll just add that there is, within the CIP, the 20-year CIP, if approved, it suggests going out and pursuing a a five-year harvest plan. And so when you look at land management, so essentially, this plan is from 30,000 feet, right? Looking at creating that sort of bracket. And then so the next step would be create that tactical plan that council is discussing where we essentially identify those areas and discuss why we're going to conduct harvest in those areas. And then have a five-year plan that is outlined in the document and uses modeling software along with the data collected by Mason Burson Gerard to essentially create a five-year harvest plan that council's discussing.
Sounds good. And and then so for my comment, if if it's okay to wrap this all up. So to wrap it up, I have complete confidence, Mr. Walsh, Ms. Camp, Ms. Appleback, and Public Works in managing our forest practices. You obviously demonstrated tonight your extensive knowledge of this. And you're, I've got no question, no concerns, period, without a call for the question.
Councilmember Mockler?
No.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Revolowski?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five yeses, one no.
Thank you. Well, so that concludes general business. Mayor Wheeler has been patiently waiting since we've changed our uh, agenda here to uh, concentrate on the business at hand. Now we'll go to our mayor's report. Mayor Wheeler, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Council President Younger and and city council members. So um, got a five or six slides to share with you tonight. All right, um, I don't know if you've you've noticed, but we've been slowly but surely uh, sprucing up our downtown boardwalk area. Um, a lot of this is in preparation for what we um, are feel is going to happen, which is renewed interest in coming to Bremerton for different activities, uh, the fan zone for FIFA World Cup and Quincy Square in general. Uh, we, we, and will probably be a um, a big draw. We anticipate a larger draw than we're used to having. We're gonna, everybody downtown will benefit. Um, but this is just one of the efforts right here. So um, getting this sign reactivated. As you can see, it's been upgraded um, with energy-efficient LED lighting. And um, when you see it, when you're, when you're down there at night, you're gonna notice that. So that's a recent recent improvement. Next slide. Okay, hundred and fifteen hundred feet of handrails, thirteen light poles have, just have a brand-new, fresh coat of paint. Um, again, you'll notice that too, and this is a partnership between the Parks and Department and the Public Works Department. Again, this is in preparation for what we um, feel will be a lot of visitors coming to our city next year. And with the goal, with the goal to um, create a repeat visitor. So help our tourism economy and support our small businesses. Anytime you're ready, Dave. No, I appreciate that, actually. I I do. So uh, Washington Avenue, Eleventh Street update, we've, you know, you you received a lot of updates from me earlier in the year. And obviously, the last final piece are these lights that have, uh, which had a long lead time that became a longer lead time um, due to some of the um, you know, the the push, not the pushback, but the uh, this is an outfall from COVID. And um, so here we are. We have those. They're being installed. You're gonna see traffic disruptions. Nikatai, who was the project manager, um, who's managing this, this part of the project, has sent out a recent uh, traffic, um, traffic alert. You'll be able to get updates from that. You can see up here where you can find information about the um, the disruptions in traffic. Um, again, it'll be all structured. And the final product is coming soon. Will be, will be completed this month. We will have lights installed. All right, snow removals. Anybody get the feeling that we're gonna be needing to be prepared for this? Well, preparation is complete. Um, every individuals are trained, and as you can see up here, um, we are, we are ready. Snow plow, sander, salt, brine, machine, brine applicators. It says, you know, you can see the PowerPoint for yourself. Um, the, one of the main things which we know is probably the most important is we have trained individuals. We have the staffing to do twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operations. And um, and and the individuals are trained that are ready to go. Next slide. All right, this is, I I wanted to share this with you. We um, the city of Bremerton has received six submittals. This is the, the first one that's been issued for the Blakely ADU, and obviously, this is part of the um, um, that effort where Bremerton joined in a, with other Kitsap cities and uh, in cooperation and collectively worked on this, this ADU design concept. Um, so we have six that are available. The, as you can see, the Blakely is um, was the first one. We have a nice picture of what that looks like. Um, I believe we are the first jurisdiction to issue uh, issue a design. Um, so this is exciting. Um, we expect to, I'll be reporting back to you as more designs are issued and as more of these come online. And again, just um, just proud of the effort that we were a part of as far as a regional effort to bring for forward these designs for the public. All right, this is a product of the Bremerton Think Tank. Um, so the idea and the, the whole idea behind uh, being a part of the effort, the city of Bremerton being a part of the effort uh, came from the Bremerton Think Tank. And so um, this is an effort, one of the efforts that Dr. Briggs has uh, engineered and with the city involved, um, bringing together the uh, city employees from a broad, broad spectrum across our city with different ideas. And this is how we are gonna, one of the ways we're gonna support the food, the food need in our community, especially with the um, shipyard, our defense workers, and actually, the federal government being shut down and and workers not being paid right now. So just really pleased with this effort, this uh, this initiative from our, from this group. And um, we'll keep working on um, more ways that we can support affected workers. And that concludes my report tonight, council.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, council member reports are next. This is an opportunity for council members to provide an update on any issues or events taking place in their district, announce any events they've recently attended or plan to attend, or to speak on any city-related topic. First council meeting of the month. As usual, we start with uh, District One. Councilmember Chamberlain.
Hey, that's, that's me. Um, in keeping with the theme of uh, visiting and applauding and celebrating uh, nonprofits that build bridges instead of burning bridges, uh, I'd like to share about a couple of places that I visited over the past couple of weeks. Um, and the first one is Pendleton Place. So it's been a couple of years now. They uh, opened up in uh, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. And um, and so it's been around for three years now. And so uh, you know, it's not as, it's not the bright, shiny new thing anymore. So I was curious to see um, what they were all about. And what I learned was um, that they've just gotten better and better over the years. Uh, so what Pendleton Place is, is permanent supportive housing. They have uh, seventy-two units uh, fully furnished, so somebody can um, they have to meet certain criteria. Uh, the HUD definition of homeless, they have to have substance use disorder or any other diagnosis, uh, mental health uh, disorder that prevents them, or disability that prevents them from uh, finding uh, housing on finding housing easily. So uh, what they have there, this is the lobby, there's a couple of pictures up here. Um, there's uh, the lobby. They have a little clothing closet. They have uh, just a lovely lobby. Um, and the first thing that struck me when I came into the front lobby was how clean this place is. And I don't know how um, else to, I don't know, you know, when you get your first impression, when you walk into somewhere and you see, it smells clean and it looks clean and it feels inviting, and it just made me feel really happy to be there and that these vulnerable folks had these um, really great accommodations. Uh, and something else that I want to make sure that people understand is, this is not like um, a managed housing where uh, people are um, uh, where when people leave, they're being uh, followed or tracked or whatever. These, these are apartments, complete, this, these are apartments. So these folks um, have uh, their, it's landlord-tenant rights. Um, when they move into the units, uh, some people just come in straight out of the woods, straight off the streets. Um, and they walk into these units and they have everything that they need. Um, and so you can go to the next slide if you, what's the next slide look like? Oh. So um, they have everything they need, um, and including uh, toiletries. There's uh, food down in the, in the main room, in the main lobby. Uh, the food line has a relationship where they bring commodities straight there, so people can bring food. Uh, what was really fun, and I forgot to mention it in the previous slide, um, was really a, a good safeguard is some of these folks, um, actually, thirty percent of the folks that are there are aging in place, so they're elderly, and they're gonna spend the rest of their days there in this housing. Um, and so you have a variety of issues that may or may not come up, including dementia. They have a timer for the stove, so that the stove will go off after thirty minutes for some residents. Um, and uh, they also have a relationship with Peninsula Community Health. There's somebody on site. Uh, they have all kinds of other services, a computer room. Um, a-again, I went to the, and then um, and uh, they're ADA compliant, of course. They, they've even got medical respite rooms and a beautiful campus. Um, and I just really, just as I was walking through, I was just really impressed with um, how warm and welcoming and clean the place was. I had a chance to chat with, um, so that's Cameron Collins, and then the, the Bridget, and Bridget works with KMH, and Cameron is the manager on site. And so Bridget is Cameron's boss. And just, I was really also impressed with uh, the level of professionalism that they that they're really data-driven and implementing best practices. And I just, I was very impressed with this organization. And I just wanted to report that it's getting better and better um, since it opened. And then um, the next screen, oh, I just wanted to give you a sneak peek, you guys. I also got the Tor Eagle's Wings Board Need to Care, and their administrative building is in my district, in District One. Uh, so we have uh, the full staff photograph down on the bottom, then center over there, but uh, the big picture there is Michelle Fleetwood. Now she and I were in KCR AmeriCorps way back in the day, I believe. It was in two thousand seven to two thousand eight. Um, and we were doing different components, different jobs in AmeriCorps, but uh, we have been working in this town and coming up together in this town ever since. She is uh, now leading the cause um, in a, with a larger team of folks with Eagle's Wings, and they have a shelter proposal that's out in Gorst, and they already have received some CHIA funding. They have other funding coming in from other sources. Um, all of the council members, the Finance Director, the City Attorney, and the Mayor uh, have a copy of the feasibility study uh, for the shelter project. And I, my hope is that um, y'all will take a look at it, maybe as a council and with administration, we can come together to support this, because they are movers and shakers, and she's gonna have this up and running uh, this season. Um, and they are a thirty-two, they're proposing, I believe, a thirty-two to thirty-eight bed uh, shelter, and they want to get it going as a temporary shelter first. So, I mean, they're trying to get it up and running ASAP. They already have a lot of things moving and shaking there. Um, but they also have uh, fourteen other houses um, that they manage transitional housing. Uh, and um, they have a medical respite that they manage. They have harm reduction. They have a, a lot of different services that they offer, and they're just a, a real uh, amazing crew, uh, just a, a tight-knit crew. Um, just kinda, just, just doing it, just getting out there and doing it if they can't. If one person says no, they're gonna find another way to do it. Uh, and with that, that's, that's my council report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Frye?
I have no report tonight, but I just want to say uh, this has been a really nice meeting. And uh, this is great. I really like this. Um, and we've, people are coming and, and feeling comfortable and coming up to the podium and speaking, and I really, really appreciate that, and it feels great. So uh, there's lots of things happening in my district, but um, uh, we'll get to those at a later date where it's uh, uh, a little bit more appropriate. So, thank y'all. Good to be back.
Thank you. Vice President Revolowski.
Yeah, thank you. Um, could I have a slide, please? Next slide, please. So as we know, um, there's a lot of folks suffering here in Bremerton. But our Bremerton Food Line has come through again. Um, they're expanding their hours. They're adding fourteen service hours per week. Um, starting November tenth, their hours will be eleven AM to six PM. Um, so next week, it'll be Monday through Wednesday, then the following weekend, Sunday um, will be available too, so that folks who are um, working have the opportunity to go get um, groceries for their family. And if you've never been there or have only been there twenty years ago, or ten years ago, or five years ago, this place is incredible now. It's like a grocery store. You get a number, and when it's your turn, you get a cart and you go and you shop for the food that your family will eat and like. It's not here's a box of uh, yellow cheese, you know? It's like real food. Over the past year, they've had a sixty-six percent increase in people who need to come and and get food for their family. Um, a lot of them are first-time clients, especially in the past month. So there's a lot of things that we can do, even if you don't have money to donate or food to donate. They need volunteers. They um, with these extra service hours, they need more people helping them in the um, actual warehouse and helping with uh, different people who come in and need help. Encourage all your neighbors to help support the local food banks, all of them, not just ours. And understand who experiences food insecurity, or what I like to call it, hunger. The city is helping, uh, city staff by putting out barrels, but I mean, it's right in my neighborhood. I try to go up there and drop off things. Uh, if I didn't have such a bad cold, both my grandson and I would be up there volunteering for their extra hours. So hopefully, next week, we feel better. Um, and I think I have one more slide about the Bremerton Food Line. Is there one more slide in there? Yeah, so um, Turkey Trot. This is a great, fun way to support the Bremerton Food Line. It's Thanksgiving morning, starts at nine o'clock. You run over the Manette Bridge or walk over the Manette Bridge. It starts down at um, in Evergreen Park. If you register by Friday, you're guaranteed swag, which includes beanies and T-shirts and all sorts of things. But I really hope a lot of folks will, um, if you can't, if you don't want to do the walk or the run, you can just um, volunteer and, and help with the people who are participating in it. They always need volunteers. So please register if you want to um, be part of the trot. If you want to just volunteer, let them know that too. But anyway, that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, good night.
All right, I'm gonna hold off on my first slide. Um, so actually, I want to talk about um, uh, recognizing that it is uh, Native American Heritage Month. And uh, that I'm involved with an indigenous uh, film series uh, at the Roxy. Uh, this Thursday, we're showing the film Sugar Cane. Uh, it's about the Indian residential schools uh, by a Bremerton filmmaker. And uh, he'll uh, be here uh, doing a talk. Unfortunately, the event is waitlisted, which means we've got four hundred and fifty-some-odd people um, already um, uh, planning to come. We do think that a lot of people went in and grabbed six tickets. And where we have messaging going out, asking people to uh, you know, adjust it down to four, three, or however many. So there is a way to sign up for a waitlist, but also we'll plan, kind of almost like student rush. If there's folks standing outside and we're about to start the film and there's empty seats, we're gonna bring people in. It's gonna be a great night. Uh, so these are the three Thursdays between uh, now and Thanksgiving. November thirteenth, we're doing um, From Sky, I'm sorry, From Earth to Sky, which is around uh, the Native American and tribal architecture. So we've got three uh, Pugetts, actually, well, Northwest architects that'll that are in the film, that'll also be doing Q and A's afterwards. Um, and then um, on November twentieth, we're showing Fish War, which we have shown again. Uh, those both have plenty of um, uh, seats available. Uh, this has been a huge uh, undertaking uh, with uh, it, it actually started with uh, our neighbor right behind us at Rice Fergus Miller. They wanted to see From Earth to Sky as like a staff day, and it, and then they have a social justice. They're a B Corp, if you don't know. Uh, and um, they want to do that, so they have um, uh, partnered with us, and we brought in, I think we've raised about nine thousand dollars to be able to pull this off, to make it completely free to the public. Uh, and we, we're gonna be And we even going to be giving youth, Julian Julian Brave Noise Cat is his new book for some youth and that's available for purchase. And it'll be signed that night and you can stay later and have it personalized anyways. We're super excited for that and I just wanted to bring that up and I should have submitted a slide. Okay. And then we'll go to my first slide, please. Thank you. Calloween was fantastic this year. It's really a cool undertaking. I didn't plan that. Thanks for noticing. They, I don't know if anybody, I don't know if anybody has been down there for, but they actually, it, it works. They put these old cars and some of the cars have like skeletons in them and stuff like that. And, and it's, and they did both blocks. If you guys know, the block in front of like the Charleston, the music venue is state highway. So that's a whole, you know, that's not us, that's a whole nother thing. And they got all that done and I could tell you it's not easy. And so it was just a great event, really proud of everybody who made it such a success. The folks down there are doing great things. Another slide from the Charleston folks. Oh, so we're getting ready for the holidays. You can hear that Mariah Carey song starting in the background. And they do a fun Krampus versus Santa bout down on Cal, that'll be December 13th. More details, krampusbremerton.com. Next slide, please. Okay, the next meeting of the Charleston Business District, anybody wanting to get involved is welcome to attend. November 18th, 6:00 PM at Unique Experience, right there in the main, sort of the middle of the block of Calo, in the city end of it. And they're also hosting a holiday potluck December 16th, 6:00 PM. And there's a link there if you want to get their newsletter, it's right this H. I'm just kidding. Okay. So I don't know, you'll find it somewhere, call me and we'll, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get you to that newsletter list if you'd like. Anyways, that's all I have. I just want to also just want to say, you know, we had the election yesterday. And, you know, I want to just thank everybody who has, you know, put in a good, good fight, put in, you know, it's, it's unless you've ever done it, you just don't, you just don't know. And I've got a lot of empathy and I'm, I'm happy for some people and I've got a lot of empathy for some other people. And, you know, just, I'm glad people do it. So because we, some of us ask ourselves why once in a while, but I just want to recognize everybody who put their name in the ring and whether they got elected or not, just thank you to all of them. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mokler.
First, thank you. Next slide, please. So this was the Habitat for Humanity Breakfast, the first annual. And they had built three houses in Bremerton in the past year. Or in the county, I forget which. Anyhow, it was a hopeful event and it was wonderful to see and talk to people who were like in a house of their own. So next slide, please. This is just a forest policy and ecological forestry in Kitsap. It's up in Kingston. Just putting this up here to emulate my colleague. Just give me a call if you don't have all this information down, but it's basically the Kitsap Environmental Coalition. It's on their newsletter if this interests you. Next slide, please. The video didn't make it? Okay, then hang on just a second. Let me do a couple of things. I had assumed that my town hall notification would come up, but it didn't. So on November 10th, it's just a general catch up at 100 Oyster Bay Avenue North, the Public Works Conference Room. Thank you, Public Works, from 5:00 until 6:30. And it's just catch up and what do you guys think we should spend money on? We've got a draft budget of 258 million that just became available to us and the public as we sat down to this meeting. And its full name is 2025, 2026 Preliminary Mid-Biennium Update, and it is available on the website. In December, the town hall will be on homeless response, what Bremerton is doing to, to connect the homeless population in Bremerton with services. I'm part of the Homelessness Coalition Plan, Five Year Plan Group. And of the many facts that I've been staring at for all week is half of, half of all the homeless people in Kitsap County are in Bremerton. So that should be good. I am hoping that Common Streets will come and talk, but that's basically what that's going to be about. And then on December 7th, Joshua Wright, forester, will be presenting for a Green Mountain Summit. If you hike Green Mountain, you want to think about how you can preserve it, how you can buffer it from development, just like we're trying to buffer the watershed from development with zoning and land purchases and so forth and so on. I also wanted to make a food bank plea, but I don't have a slide. The, there's a lot of help for military and government employees. My neighbor, she's a home healthcare aide, got two special need kids. Her last paycheck was last week because the people she works with are Medicare and Medicaid. So the company she works for was just like, well, I told her about Food Line and how it was like a grocery store and, and that seemed to really cheer her up a lot. It's no longer like you have to go and stand at a, like a little box in the wall. It's, you just go and shop like a normal person. Okay, video, please.
So sorry, one, one second. I'm not aware of a video and video is fine as long as it's not a copyrighted item. Is this?
I took it.
Okay, no worries. And it's a city related.
No, I, it's, it is city related, actually.
No, no, that was a question. So no worries. Go ahead.
Yeah. So on November 1st, I participated in the, whatever, many people were doing the salmon tour. And here is, I hope, the seven second version. Seven seconds of salmon. Seven seconds of salmon. Okay, so that's enough. Thank you very much, Dave. So I really liked that because it was like being an elected official. It's like, you just, you, you're swimming upstream, you're hanging out in a bank. And then other fish come by and like, we're going to go, we're going to go. And it was, it was most exhilarating. It was the Rhoda Denfren Preserve right outside Bremerton. If you haven't been there, it's a knockout. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So a reminder that as indicated, well, we do this every time, right? After a council meeting, the following Wednesday, we have a study session. So the next one will be Wednesday, November 12th, beginning at 5:00 PM, sixth floor council conference room with a remote option available via Zoom. That concludes tonight's regular business meeting. Have a good night, folks.